Board meeting, Tuesday, October 29th. We have another good one for you tonight. Let's see, we're gonna start off with some Planning Board business and policies. We have two members absent tonight that we have all discussed and they're gonna be calling in, but we need to, we need to vote, I think, again on this to make sure that we're, we're able to do that properly, so. The Board of Selectment had gone through and put together a list of procedures, policies and procedures for remote participation. I believe it was in everybody's packet last, I think they sent it out last week, so everybody should have this. Again, this is what was approved by the Board of Select in October 17th. So what we need to do now is just approve it as the Planning Board, so we can allow them to, to join the meeting. If we can get them on the phone.
I think we talked about this at a previous meeting before, so I'm happy to make that motion if, I don't think there's any further discussion before we do. Obviously, it's something that we only use as, somebody's literally unavailable to be here in person. It's not a substitute for.
Yeah, I, I should go into a little more detail about why we're, we're having them do this tonight. Because we have the, the remand for special, for SP 48. We need to have the folks that were in the initial vote present at this final meeting. Time wise for getting it back. That's not working.
Julie?
Yes.
Okay, we have you now on the conference call. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Perfect. We're just about to vote to hopefully allow you to participate in the meeting.
Julie, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're just talking about allowing remote participation, so once that's done and we vote on that, we can, I don't think Orrin's gonna be on the phone, so it's just gonna be you. And then we'll move forward. So again, as I was saying, with the remand for this and the timeline, we really only had this meeting to get this in, so this is why we're, we're kinda rushing this through. I don't normally like to rush things through, but we already discussed this previously, and I don't think it's an issue. For me personally, if anyone else has anything to say.
I'd motion second.
You have motion and a second. Any further discussion on, let's, do you wanna be specific on the motion for the record?
I would move to approve the remote participation policy, which was approved by the Board of Selectment for the Planning Board.
I think they did it for all boards.
Through what they did for us, yes.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? So all in favor?
It's better be by roll call.
Oh, well, she's not participating, oh, okay. It'll be by roll call. Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Julie, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling in.
No problem.
All right, so the next, the next item was we have the, did we do the 17th minutes, or did we, we didn't sign off on those yet, right?
We did not.
We didn't? Do we have them? No? Okay. So we have the October 22nd minutes. Are there any questions, changes on these?
I missed this before, but there's one small typo in the first bullet under the remand. This is, should be missed.
Okay. There are none, I'll accept the motion to approve these.
So move second.
Okay, we have motion and a second to approve the October 22nd minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, we have to do a roll call, I'm sorry. Kevin?
Motion was for the October?
The October 22nd.
Yes, yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes, as long as I don't have to abstain from not being present.
You do.
You do.
All right, so then I abstain.
Okay. And I will vote yes.
I was abstaining myself.
Joe will have to abstain as well.
Okay. So for the record, Joe's abstaining as well.
Right.
Okay. All right, we don't have any bills tonight, do we, Paul?
No.
Okay. All right, onward to the remand of SP, of SP 488.
Mr. Chairman, I will refuse myself.
You can't keep doing this the whole discussion.
I thought you wanted to.
If you could go on, be one thing.
Thank you.
Yeah, right. Hopefully, you don't move.
All right, so I'm gonna open this up to the board, wherever anybody wants to start. I'd like to keep it fairly in line, so we're not scattered back and forth from page to page.
Right, because when I saw that, I was like, well, does that mean that the findings were then started running all the same time? Which, so, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if we could possibly go to the document in your folders that says, it should say Amy Cleveland comments, do all of them have this?
Okay.
So, and if we could start with the site plan review decision, because the special permit decision will be much shorter, because the special permit is only, the only things we have to worry about with the special permit are the inverters, because they're the only, that's, that's the only thing in jurisdiction.
Okay.
So, and it was also a denial, so we don't have to do conditions. So, what I did with this, just so you guys know, I took Orrin's comments, and there were some comments that were emailed from Julie, and then Paul had put something together, and I think Steve and Nicole. So, I kinda took everything and went through it, made all kinds of track changes, and then I took a look at the document, and I thought that there's no way we would be able to get through it with track changes. So I made a clean version, I left the comments. The significant thing that I didn't accept from Orrin's comments were that he had about four or five paragraphs on the Water Resource Protection District, and that was not applied for. So it was, that special permit was not applied for, it wasn't considered, there were no findings by this board. What I did leave in, the paragraph stating that it is within the Water Resource Protection District, the, the issue with that is whether they are subject to it. They are within the Water Resource Protection District, but the question is whether they're subject to it, and that, again, is a question for the buildings, the building commissioner to determine under the zoning bylaw. So when they go in for a, when they go in for a building permit, the building commissioner will determine whether the, and if they are subject to it, and he determines that they need a special permit, they have to come back.
So it falls, again, in the category of, we're not in charge of telling them all the relief that they need if they're not going to apply for it.
Exactly. But I did leave in the paragraph stating that they are within the Water Resource Protection District and law. So the, the decision starts with just the findings, the procedural history, you know, one of Orrin's comments that I thought was really good was he put in, you know, everything that basically that, that the court ordered for us to do. I left that in. And then, when we go down to the general findings, there's just a couple things that I think that between Paul and myself, we need to fix. For example, I don't think any land is owned by the applicant.
The, actually, there is. The adjacent parcel, there's a solar facility there, they actually own that, so that's what that reference was here.
It's not part of this, it's not part of this plan, but it's adjacent to where they would connect to, to the, where they would connect to the grid.
Right.
So they're, so that property is owned by them.
Right.
Not anything that's actually part of this, the land in this decision.
Correct, that's Farland Farms.
So, across a portion of the property. Okay, so I think that's, yeah. Okay. And then we'll put on, we'll put in the rest of it. So, one of the other, Orrin had a comment regarding what their status was with the SMART program, and what they filed with the SMART program, and all that, all those kinda things. And I, I did not accept that comment, simply because, I went back through my notes, I don't remember any, I don't remember us ever having a conversation about that, about where they were with the SMART program, where they, what applications they filed, things like that. We know that they, they had not secured approval, that, and I left that in here. And the other thing is that the bylaw, as written, the bylaw that we're going off of, which is not current bylaw, but the one we're going off of, does not require that they be accepted into the SMART program prior to us issuing a settlement. It just says that they have to apply under the SMART program, so.
Well, my view on this, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, is that at this location, this facility is, is only allowed use under the SMART program.
Correct.
Okay, so if they're not approved in the SMART program, they cannot have building permit essentially?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was a condition that you all asked for, that's in this, in the site plan decision?
Yeah. So, my point, that's one of, like, the most central parts of this whole thing, so just, yeah.
And, and that is in here, what is, what I took out where Orrin wanted.
Is it, this is on page two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a separate file with Orrin's comments.
And they apply for or received a statement of qualifications, so that's not a requirement, a requirement of that, you know, they have to be accepted.
Can I just clarify too, that you're working on the version that's written at the top that says Amy slash Orrin?
No.
No?
No, this one here.
Okay, 'cause I'm seeing it here, I'm, okay.
Yeah, this is more, this is more.
Yeah, okay.
And I, I don't know if this changes anything, but I believe it was discussed as far as the SMART program, that there was, it was already filled, and that they, yeah, so.
Right, and we have that, but what we didn't discuss was this statement of qualification.
Okay.
So that's why, it's only one, it's a question that, yeah, that I deleted, because I think we cover it in that paragraph, we clearly say, I think I, we say it twice, that they're not, they haven't been accepted yet.
Okay.
And then, the other thing, Paul, you and I need to check and make sure that, that 65 days applies to site plan, because that is a special.
Yeah, there's, I believe our bylaw says under site plans that if a site plan is combined with a special permit, then the.
It does, but for some reason, I thought that your site plan, you had to, I thought it was 30 days. We, you and I can check that.
Okay.
Okay. And then, we go on. So on, no, on 10 is where we say that it's within zone two of the Water Resource Protection District. And then 11, this is where, this was from Orrin adding conservation commission conditions into, or findings into this decision. So, I, I don't have a problem with this, because I know that this was discussed regarding a butter's water, but I just, I have no idea what he's saying. It says that the number one, potential hazardous materials or chemicals leaching into their water from the project and materials being used, breaking of the something barrier hydro, hydrologics. And I went through my notes, and I couldn't find anything.
I think I would call it like a hydrologic barrier, if I, I'm not sure if that's the correct term either, but the idea being kind of like you're popping a balloon.
Okay.
Did he pull that directly from the findings of CONCON?
I didn't see it in the CONCON.
We have talked about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then we do have a, we do have a, we do have a condition further down on that.
And with 12, I think my understanding is that would be around the inverter area.
Yeah, that's, that was on the plan.
Yeah, not on the equipment.
Inverter area?
And batteries.
Inverter and batteries, yeah.
Yeah, be mine, yeah.
Okay, so with screening, given the average number of years for the proposed screening to reach maturity and provide the needed screening, there was concern relative to the screening being adequate. So, that's a fine, that's, that's okay for a finding, but did, was a condition discussed?
Mm-hmm.
And what was the, what did, what was the length?
10 years.
Okay. So, did, I thought there was a comment about 20 years, because my notes also say 10 years.
I believe the discussion was 10 years, because that was what their landscape consultant had said, it would take the findings to reach their full maturity.
Yeah, yeah, initially, some of them were 20 years, so that might be where the 20 came from.
Okay, that's what, okay, that's, maybe that's where the 20 came from. So then, and there was also a comment that said, this is a comment from the minutes, looks as though 205 and 207 Bay Road are not adequately screened. Was that of her address?
Yes, because that's where they're adding screening, they revised the landscape plans to put screening on one of the access roads in that area.
And that, so that follows the extent that applicants no longer pursuing the agreement with, with the sand and gravel. There's an opportunity to place screening on an interior access road?
Mm-hmm.
So are we making that a condition also?
Well, it's in the, it's on their revised plan now.
Yeah, it's on the.
I mean, I, I don't believe we had put 205 and 207.
Specifically, no.
The polyalan is on the far, assuming up is north, east side of the plans we've been looking at the whole time.
Right.
And the screening that you were talking about is west.
Yeah.
So it's two different.
I'm, I'm looking at the condition on page eight, that we don't mention 205 and 207, but again, they, they did provide a revised landscaping plan to show that.
So, so we could, I think we could leave that, the finding in 15 is, given the average number of years for the proposed screening to reach maturity and provide the needed screening, there was concern relative to the screening being adequate, and leave it at that, because the condition covers the rest of that paragraph, the condition on page eight.
So get rid of everything after being adequate, okay.
Okay.
The rest of it, it's all in the condition. And then, the next one is the finding on, on batteries. So, I don't really understand, I didn't understand, the batteries will run up to six hours after sundown, which could be nine to 10 p.m.? That seems like it's too early.
Yeah, I don't know why that's in there, that shouldn't, it should be six hours after sundown.
It's not after sundown. It's after, let's see. So the batteries kick on, the solar power is only at full gener, it's only at full power at the very, very peak of the sun, and any given day. So that's when it's building up, and that's when it's at its, what, eight megawatt hour, eight, we'll just say eight, whatever number it is, and it's dumping two to the grid. And it can dump two to the grid at any one point, so it only will start kicking on and feeding energy to the grid until after this farm itself has dropped below that two rate, so it'll supplement it at a rate of consistent two until it runs out.
Yeah, well, easier way to do it is.
And the discussion has always been that on June 21st, which is the sunniest day of the year, that the latest it'd go would be like 9:30, 10 o'clock.
So why don't, could we say that the batteries could run as late as 9:30 to 10:00 p.m.?
Well, as long as the sun is hitting the panels, it's still gonna be running, it's still gonna be charging the batteries, so it could run six hours after that, is what, what my impression was, so if the sun is hitting these until seven o'clock at night, it's gonna be six hours after that. So that nine or 10 is not correct.
That has not been my impression at all.
So we should probably leave it that it could be six hours after sundown.
I don't know about sundown, yeah, 'cause sundown might not be the right, because the sun, I mean, the sun would go below the trees, and it's still up, but.
In, in terms of a finding, not in terms of a condition?
Yeah.
But I, I agree with you that the condition, the finding is that our concern is that at some, during some days of the year, the batteries could be running until nine or 10 p.m. Rather than, when does it start, when does it, that's, they've always said, like, nine, 10. That's been fairly consistent, unless I'm misremembering.
Right, but they were clear that the batteries would continue to transmit roughly six hours after the, the.
Until.
The panels kickoff, basically.
It's not until they kickoff, it's when they stop producing at the level the grid will accept. So they'll still be getting sun when the batteries kick on.
Right.
So there's a period where both are providing power to the grid at the same time, and only when it's completely dark is the battery solely funneling its energy and draining down.
Yeah, my impression of this was it, it was gonna be running until the sun went below.
So is the finding, the batteries could run as late as 9:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., is that a sufficient?
I absolutely think they could run later than that, that's, that's, that's been clear, I think. I know that, I know they said nine or 10, but they also said six hours after sundown, and I know what you're saying, it's like, you know, it's not taking as much of the, the energy from the sun, but you gotta remember, there's all these panels that are producing up to eight, so they could be getting 25% of the sun and still be pushing out two.
Right.
And those batteries aren't gonna kick on until, so I.
But then they get to 24%, then the batteries start to kick on.
Right, which could be right when the sun dips below that, that line.
Yeah.
How about if the board is concerned that batteries could run during 9 to 10 hours?
Yeah.
Sure.
I just wanna make sure, I mean, I don't wanna give anybody any false hope that it's gonna be stopping at nine or 10, 'cause I don't think that's the case.
My impression was that it was. I think if I had heard anything past 11, I would've been much more concerned about that aspect of it.
Yeah, I think, I think it was very carefully said that, you know, that's probably the average, nine to 10 p.m., but on the longer days during the summer, yeah, absolutely, because it was specific, six hours after, so.
Our question was that was on the longest day. The, the finding, as we've written it, kind of, I think speaks to it as a whole, so that's fine.
So the next one is the noise, which I, I did not really make, I didn't make any changes. I pretty much accepted, in fact, Orrin didn't have many changes on that, I don't think, so.
Oh, those, though, this is his, that's all of his language. There's a couple things I just wanted to bring up as I, you know, as we were looking at this.
Figure out what was his and what was, what was ours.
Yeah, there's a lot of versions.
Yeah. So, okay, so yeah, so if you wanna go through this, I made no changes to this.
Yeah, again, it's, it's just things that, as I read through it again, just, just wanted to put out there and see where you all are on this, but there was a, going back to one of mine, well, one of which is, he's making the comment about, there's a statement in here, and it's, it's a fact, that if you look at the, the third paragraph from the bottom, and he makes the comment about that the, that the, based on the location of the inverter and battery equipment at its current location will violate the noise regulation under 310 CMR 7.10. Now, if you recall the conversation, he was pointing out that, that, oh, right up above it, he talks about that it would be about 30 decibels. Well, the statement, the state requirement is 10 decibels above ambient background noise, but.
10 decibels or 10%?
10 decibels.
That's 10 decibels?
The challenge here is, we don't know what the background is, so.
Well, but the, no, I think the applicant, I think it might possibly make sense to change that to may violate, to be a little bit softer, but, I mean, they said, they gave a chart that basically had like rings of decibels above background, and the property line, it was like 50. So if you knock 30 off it, you're at 20, and you're still over 10.
Right.
So, from our non-engineering perspectives, it might.
Right, but again, it's above ambient, or above background noise, and, not saying it's not going to be above it, but.
Yeah.
We don't know what, what the background noise is. The other consideration is, you know, the applicant has agreed that if they needed to mitigate the sound, they would do so. This statement doesn't factor that, so again, we.
That's just.
We don't know what the off-site impacts will be at this point, and to make a statement that it's.
Why don't we say, the inverter and battery equipment at its current location could, could violate the noise regulations, the noise regulation under 310 CMR 7.10, the applicant.
And further mediation?
The applicant has agreed to mitigate, you know, to see any, but again, you're right, it's gonna have to be, any noise violations.
Well, we're on record, in part, because I pushed it, that at the property line, there'd be no discernible noise. And my concern with the, the language in the next to the bottom paragraph.
Just, this is the finding, not the condition.
No, I understand that, but the statement that says.
Oh, that one, yeah.
10 decibels is too high, and zero may be too restrictive. I don't know that we ever voted on that as a, as a policy, or as a.
We didn't. You, you didn't, it was a conversation.
Right, and so my concern is, that provides an out for the next authority that looks at this and says, even the Planning Board said that zero was too restrictive. I'd be more comfortable in letting the court know, unless there is, that would color, or that would suggest to a court that we were being unreasonable, that we are on record as saying that out of an abundance of concern, ambient noise above background, that we voted there'd be no perceptible.
Well, that'd be outlined in the condition, portion of it.
Well, but we don't have it in the conditions, so that's.
You don't have, we, it doesn't show.
Right, but all I'm saying, wherever it has to go, is I'm troubled by a statement that says zero decibels may be too restrictive. If we're gonna go that route, then we oughta put on record that we voted that there'd be no ambient sound, that'd be no sound above, above background at the property line, above zero.
In other words, we can't put that we feel zero is too restrictive, and then put in the conditions that were requiring zero, contradicting each other ourselves.
Yeah.
So.
I think the findings need, the statement needs to be adjusted.
So what would you all suggest that be?
I might just strike the last section.
So if you add those two together, those $61,000 and $64,000.
State standard property line, blah, 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 eh, ten decibels, maybe too high, period.
Yeah, I think sixty-one thousand for a whole time.
I could leave it to Amy. Comma rather than period, given that the board, um, is on record as voting for the sound level of zero above background. Again, my concern with that, look, a court's gonna look at this and either accept it, or craft their own. And my concern is if we put something in here that is viewed by a court as onerous, uh, then we we hurt our own credibility.
So.
So.
Joe, do you want to kind of restate what you were thinking in terms of the second to last paragraph in that noise finding, well, the second to last bullet on that page in the noise finding?
I would suggest that, uh, after the words, background noise levels of ten decibels, put in comma, given the board has voted that there'd be no background, no discernible noise at the property line above background. My concern with that is will a court look at that and view it as unreasonable and therefore taint their view of our whole decision?
No, no, that's, that's what the finding was, I, I remember.
Right, I, I just, um, because I'm troubled with the way that is written.
Yeah. It's mirrored what's in the condition.
And we're okay to put that in this section. I just want to make sure that's good, because I'm, I'm okay with that. As long as we're okay doing that.
So Amy, you may not have picked up on that, but the very end of that sentence where it says zero may be too restrictive? Oh, you were here? Okay. You did, yeah.
Okay. So it's gonna say, given the neighborhood abutting this proposed project, the board found that the state standard of the property line above a base study using existing background noise levels of ten decibels.
I think it used to be something, we're missing something.
That is too high, comma. I put the comma in the wrong, wrong spot.
I don't know if given, maybe, maybe, maybe not, notwithstanding the fact that the board voted to.
Right.
Given-
Yeah, that's, that's-
Relation there.
Okay.
Julie, you still with us?
I am.
Do you have any comments on this?
No, I, I think everything you guys are discussing is fine. No, no comments so far.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just want to make sure you're still there.
I am.
So we're all okay with that, that change?
Okay.
And then the next thing that I have, um, is the, um, number eighteen, the, um, the safety. That I think would, I think we'd be better off with that as a condition.
It's there.
Yeah, so should we take it, should we take it out or should we make it into a finding? I, I don't think we really need it as a finding. Because it really is just simply a there is no finding. It's just that the fire, the fire, the deputy fire chief has these requirements, and so we're gonna make them do them. Which is more of a condition, not a finding.
There was nothing specific, so.
Right.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. Anybody else? Same thing with number twenty-three, is that what you?
Yeah, uh, number nineteen though, or actually, my numbering changed. But the one that says the applicant filed the appeal of the order of conditions issued by the conservation commission. Yeah.
Yeah.
Which was based on a different plan and had been submitted to this board, um, claiming that several provisions are, are the authority of this planning board, not the conservation commission. And then he's got concern about the height of the screening. I, I didn't understand why he has screening and berms with conservation commission funding.
I don't know, but we do have a condition, and the applicant agreed that we're, we're feasible. We'll work with them to see if berms can be used to elevate the vegetation, to provide better screening.
So that should be more of a condition than a finding?
Okay, so take this out.
I'm just gonna leave it that the, that the applicant filed an appeal of the order of conditions, and that the order of conditions was based on a different plan. And that the, uh, the applicant, during the applicant's appeal, the claims were based on the fact that several provisions are the authority of the planning board, not conservation. That is all, that was all discussed and that was planned.
So are we, okay, we're deleting the last sentence then?
The last sentence, last two clauses, I guess it would be.
Starting with about.
Okay, get rid of about the height of the screening, okay. And we confirmed it was a different plan with commission, uh, Kong Kong, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and then when we were at the S O C, when we were at the site visit, they pulled out even another, another, but that was after, so we won't, we don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
No, like, we're only approving one plan, so.
We are, yes. But Kong Kong approved a plan, and then they, at the D E P's site visit, they changed the plan. And D E P had no problem. And then, um, yeah, so the same, so now, um, yeah, on truck traffic. There was concern that truck traffic would cause damage to neighboring properties. But I'm not sure if there was ever a finding on that, and if there was any, uh, any discussion on mitigation. I couldn't find any-
There's a condition.
The applicant agreed to talk with specific abutters who feel they may be impacted.
And, well, they, um-
There was one in particular.
We, we do have a condition, number thirty-four on page ten, that says the applicant shall protect adjoining property, including public utility, sanitary, why we gotta replace sanitary sewer, water, storm drainage, and other utilities from the project site. Applicant will repair any damage immediately at no additional cost to the town or the abutter if found liable.
Okay, so I, I don't think we need a finding on that. It's a condition. I think it's stronger as a condition.
Right, yeah.
Someone with a comment?
Right.
So I can tell you that the comparable, like, the town comparison that I put together, I emailed everybody, has parks, parks, and now has a subcatering. You can see what they're spending.
Okay, and then, um-
So we can't be able to see what they're spending it on, but we can see what they're all spending.
Um, and then the last two findings are not findings. They're notes that we cover in conditions.
Okay.
Yeah. So those can be removed from the findings, okay?
Okay.
So, uh, there wasn't any, um, Paul, I, I'm not, I don't know about you, I had no, um, I had no concerns with any of the, um, additions to site plan criteria that was ever added.
Right.
It's really just hot, you know, cut and paste from the, from the bylaw.
Right. Right, so the only addition was that, um, you're right. Question?
Thank you.
So now this is, that's
Okay.
That is very good.
So then we can move on to conditions?
Yes. Unless anyone has any comments on the, um, the site plan criteria?
Just a quick, uh, grammatical correction. This is felt like at least a duel, if not a battle, but number four on the first one you got.
Joe, what page?
Uh, number four, first page. It says, it, it says duel, D U E L, D U A L.
First page of what?
First page-
Of the whole thing? Oh, okay.
Item number four, uh, the second line toward the end, uh, right after three point nine megawatt B C.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we, everybody good to move on to conditions?
So the standard conditions, um, are standard. I had no, I had no changes on those. And then, um, under, um, under prior construction, they're all relatively standard up until number six, I guess, um, which, which, um, limits how the trucks, uh, construction trucks entering and exiting the site shall do so via Bay Road in order to access interstate twenty-five. That's quite specific. And then the next one is the decommissioning.
Sorted by population. And then I sat there and I looked at total road miles and area.
And then, uh, so I guess we go down to nine, which is, has some question in it.
But also in general size. Because if you have a population of ninety thousand people
That has to do with the noise.
Six square miles, it's much different.
Right. This reflects, um, the discussions we had on the conditions back oct- on October first.
Right. It's complicated for sure.
Yeah, was it, was it you, Tim, that brought that up, the pure tones?
Yes. I will have
I think it's more valuable
Think now that I'm looking at it again. I think in the prior to construction condition, the purpose of this is to have the engineer see if it will meet the criteria.
We spend the lowest of all of them on library. We spend the lowest of all of them. We spend the highest of all of them on schools, you know, but, you know, what, to see where we kind of shake up
I think it covers everything I wanted it to.
Right.
Yeah.
And this also talks about that no discernible, oh, I'm sorry.
No, um, should we put, shall at least be measured in in decibels and pure tones?
I think that's the only thing you can do.
Right, and I think one of the-
Right.
Yeah.
I had talked with a, an acoustical engineer, said megahertz was not a good measure. Don't ask me to explain why, um, but that pure tones would be
Yeah.
The measure that is, an acoustical engineer could could understand and, and make a reasonable, uh, study from.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, I, I don't know anything about acoustics, so I figured.
Yeah, and really where we're gonna get to the degree is on twenty-eight
Yeah.
prior occupancy, so I think this covers the the intent and needs for prior construction. So, there's a couple of-
So is everyone okay with that? As written, uh, well, the change there was to pure tones? Yeah, we decided, on the first, is that what you said?
Yeah.
So the only thing we're doing is deleting the comment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was just a note to everybody.
Yeah.
Um, the next one is about the pilot. Is that something we can include in this, or?
I'm sorry?
That's okay.
On that page?
Yeah, number ten, about the, um, establishing the final pilot. I know the question was if we're, we're able to include that.
That's not under our, that's not under our jurisdiction.
Okay.
So I would get rid of that, yeah.
Okay. Is this another one that's not numbered right below that, or is it?
I think, yeah, it looks like-
All the eleven moved down?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's formatting.
Yeah. Yeah.
So ten will now become the geotech
Yep.
Um, condition.
Perfect.
Okay, so, um, so it says the applicant must produce and provide to the planning board and conservation commission it should say a geotechnical geotechnical report. And then it says, do we need to, I think this is Orr's question, do we need to establish qualification of person providing the report?
I would specify, it says in the comment from Paul that it'll be stamped by a professional engineer, so I would put that in there.
Yeah, you can just put in stamped by a professional engineer, yeah?
Yeah.
Makes it easy.
Paul already put it there?
All right, Paul?
I'm putting it in now.
You already, you already put it in the comments?
Yeah, no. Oh, well, I was just pointing out what the order of conditions was doing, and that the applicant had, was appealing this particular aspect of the order, and their comment was that the plan will be stamped by a P E. So.
That works.
Okay, and then the last one is the findings of the geotechnical report, here in the assessment. Must be presented in the planning board and conservation commission as a condition to proceeding. They can't, we can't bind the conservation commission, so it'll have to be, uh, must be presented and accepted by the planning board. And we could say in consultation with the conservation commission.
Okay.
As a condition to proceeding proceeding with what? Proceeding-
Where in the prior to construction section?
With, so proceeding with construction?
And it says the applicant shall provide the planning board with a copy of its statement of qualification application, including without rotation document required under twenty-two, when submitted, shall correspond to project as proposed and and as a condition to proceeding. Shall provide a planning director with the requisite statement of qualifications confirming absence eligibility under this program. They can't even get a building from about it. So this, this condition's a little late.
This is prior to construction, right?
It's still prior to-
Yeah.
Prior to construction.
Yeah, we're still prior to construction.
So.
He's just making sure that we get a copy of it. It has to go to the building.
Because they have to, they have to give them to the building.
Yeah, so we just want to make sure that we have it for our, our records as well.
I get it now. Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. So isn't, aren't 11 and 12 the same?
No. Is the statement of qualification application related to the SMART program?
But if they.
One's the application, one is the, the acceptance to the program.
Why wouldn't we just take the acceptance?
Yeah, I, I don't know where number 11, I'm not sure where that one, I don't recall writing it, so I don't know if this was.
Yeah, that was added.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with, with just keeping the acceptance, I don't think we need to see their application.
So 11 will keep 12, which requires that they have to provide the approval and all that, and all the stuff from the GEAR.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm not sure that some of the people that are running the departments today even conceptualize the option, like.
I just had a question on three, it says there shall be no outdoor storage on, I'm sorry, on, uh, prior to interconnection. There shall be no outdoor stor- storage.
They're not being offered.
Could we maybe specify that, outdoor storage of?
Yeah, that's a little broad.
So to me, it's.
Why is that in there?
Typically, well, typi, that's actually a fairly typical condition for, you know, making sure that, you know, there might be materials of, let's say if it's, was a warehouse that you wouldn't want
stuffed.
Stuff that, yeah, we'd want that material to be covered. I mean, obviously if it's construction, it's going to be stored outside, or could be. Not sure what that would be in this case.
Yeah, cause we'd need to be able to explain that.
Yeah.
So it'd be of any construction materials, or of any, no, because they'd have to keep them outside.
Can I just ask, uh, we have prior to construction and then we have, um, post-construction. Is prior to interconnection basically during construction?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was originally, um, that, but then, uh, the board, someone had a great idea that this is more about the ability to interconnect, once they're ready, so.
So is, is the, is this particular no outdoor storage, was that related to during construction?
I don't, I don't remember that being brought up.
Was that?
Typically it is, typically it is. Again, this is a bit different that.
What would we be hoping to avoid with this in here is what my question would be.
Well, you don't want, again, things like if you were, uh, storing, let's say cleaning materials, cleaning products, those could be stored inside. You know, we're trying to minimize the, the visual impacts, I mean, obviously certain things you're not going to when it comes to construction, but things that, that could be, but I'm not sure in this case what that, that thing is.
To, to me, I'm, I'm looking at this and it could be so broad as to, you know, they could have a vehicle there and that's stored outside and that, I think if we're going to keep it in, we should be specific.
Right.
So do we have anything, or we just delete that? Or should we just move on?
Unless anybody has anything, I'd say delete it.
I'm concerned deleting it because, you know, we're going to stockpile excess spools of wire, spare solar panels, in case, or, to me, there ought to be some type of limitation.
Yeah, that's what I was waiting for somebody to speak up.
Maybe you do it.
I'm frankly okay with the way it is because it's prior to interconnection, so up until the day they want to interconnect, they can have anything they want. But, once they want to go live, anything that's extraneous to their operations, um, has to go.
Well, then that's, that's, I guess what I'm looking for is more specific. It, as it's written, like I said, they could, they could have a vehicle next to the batteries that they use to go get the cranberries and that's stored on the site and that's against this condition here. So that's, I, I agree with you, I don't think, I don't think that they should be storing things out there. But we need to be specific about it.
About of non, Amy, what if we said of non-construction material?
Or non, you just, you just said it the right way too, and I, I didn't write it down. Non, um.
Extraneous, that would be, that's the word.
There's something to the.
I have one suggestion.
Julie. Oh, Julie.
So, so maybe, maybe we should say something of no storage of, of, um, anything outside construction materials, but you could also frame it of if, if construction materials were to be stored on site, they should be done so in a neat and tidy manner, or in an organized fashion, so that the site doesn't look like a disaster.
I think that accomplishes the purpose.
Or maybe outside of.
Our heads, Julie.
Yeah, maybe outside of anything essential.
I can't see, but I'm going to take the silence as, maybe that's a good thing.
There shall be no outdoor storage of non-construction materials. All construction materials stored outside shall be in a orderly manner.
Or not, non-essential, or something, something to do with.
Should be maintained in an orderly manner.
How about stored and maintained?
Stored and maintained, okay.
So we have lighting, new signs, um.
Do we have any real actual questions for the recognition department?
Motion controls, um.
How about what you consider?
I'm just noticing this now. There are points where we refer to different, the conditions at different stages, and the titles of those sections don't always seem to match up.
Right, I, I've gone through and identified those.
Okay.
Not on this draft, but.
That's, okay.
Yeah, I, I think overall, in general, I think we should, um, any kind of formatting or, or, um, you know, spell check stuff, we can kind of do after the fact.
I'm thinking that was going forward, rather than renumbering it each section, just continue it. It just gets.
Yeah, so we can, we can, we, we need to get through this stuff, so we can, I mean, we can deal with formatting stuff offline, we don't have to do that during a meeting.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that, that does make sense. Um, anything else on this section here, the prior to interconnection, it, it looks to be everything we hit on.
Right, so if we go down to, um, if we go down to 28? We have another noise. So, I wasn't sure why we had here two.
This was actually the reason for this, um, prior to interconnection, I believe, I, I know Joe
Yeah.
was a proponent for this, so.
So, Amy, the first one is, is the background study.
Okay.
This is then, once you've done the background study, this is, um, prior to interconnection, then you have the system up and running, you will then test it to compare how your, compare against the background.
Is it worded the way you were, um, we talked about it, Joe? So I, I just want to make sure we, I, I think we're all in agreement on it, but, um, the town electrical inspector will be precluded, we can add that as this condition, correct?
It says that, that is.
I know, but we can, okay.
Oh.
No, I mean, that, that can be, we can keep that there, is what I'm saying.
Amy, that last underlined section in that point.
In that same section we were talking about. Do you see what we're saying?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, good.
Amy, did you have the question about, uh, in the beginning about, what about the seven days?
No. I deleted it, cause I didn't, I don't think it makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, I.
Yeah, I know.
Because we're, we're, the study, I mean, it shouldn't have to be a board certified.
Right.
You know, from the Institute of Noise Control Engineering, I mean, it's.
Right.
National, I mean, these are qualified.
Thank you.
And then we have a true.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Thirty-five is the, um, annual, uh, annual basis, the monitor for water quality.
Uh, we have it as 36 in ours.
That's right. I think we're going to have to put, um, after impacts to wells of a butter's, we're going to have to put a butter's must, um, agree to allow the applicant and its successors access to private wells.
Do we say they must agree, or, or those who have agreed? I know we went back and forth on this a couple times.
Oh, well, I mean, they have to agree to allow them on their property.
Yeah, so we're.
So, you're only going to get your well tested if you if you allow online property.
So the wording should, you know.
So demonstrate that it does not cause, or impacts to wells of a butter's who have agreed.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't think we need to talk about sure helping.
And I'm taking out all the underlining, cause I think it's, some of it's for questions and some of it's not, so I think we should just take it out.
That, that means, uh, that next sentence, the report must be submitted to the town with a copy? Take that out?
No.
Okay.
Just the underlying part.
The underlining, I'm leaving the words in, just the underlining.
Remember the emphasis.
Yeah.
Oh, that, that's not emphasis, that was from just showing the change made, that's going away.
Yeah.
Okay, cause it didn't go away when I correct, when I accepted all changes.
Oh, maybe because we put it in as an underline, not as a track change, but all of that's going to go away.
Okay. Um, then we have decommissioning, and then, um, you know, the annual report on the, on productivity of the prop that I agree with Paul is required. So it's not a big, it's not a big deal, let me give it to us too.
Page seventeen, we've already reviewed those in a separate.
So keep it?
Yeah, I think we should keep it.
Correct. I did it that way.
And then I, I think we should also, the other, the next comment, we should keep that mission also. So.
And then, I handed them out tonight.
I think that we stop the condition that ongoing compliance with the SMART program is required.
I reran the little pie chart. There are two steps of them, and the next one I don't understand.
I believe the next one is missing. The burden of continual noise compliance.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But we already have that in there.
Not for post-construction.
Yeah, not as a continuation.
Okay.
Basically, even if we, your test came up all hunky-dory before you interconnected, but you still need to continue to comply. Regardless of what the test said.
And then the other, um.
Okay. And then the rest is, um.
So that, I re, I.
The rest is standard.
And then I.
So I'm sorry, uh, Amy, uh, that, going back to noise, is that add-on about monitoring that you've, was that you or Orin, I'm not sure, but so we can get rid of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, cause we covered it under the, um, condition.
The one above, yeah. In the record of the vote, is it standard that, would it be standard if we noted that a member had recused themselves, or no? Or just ignore it, pretend they didn't exist for the proceeding?
Amy, you had told, you had mentioned to take him out because he just hasn't.
He didn't abstain, he was just, he recused himself, so.
So he doesn't exist for this?
Yes.
Okay.
He exists in real life. Who, I, I don't see him, we'll see him soon. He'll be back soon.
So, um, okay, so that's, that's the site plan of all the conditions, do we want to move on to the special permit?
Just one question, so do, do we have a, um, a noise threshold, uh, not to exceed background noise or zero, zero percent increase?
Not perceptible above background?
Yeah.
Yeah, do we have that in post-construction? I see it in.
It's continual compliance.
Oh.
Right.
That last one, forty-four.
So it's in the.
It's sort of really weird, that's why I didn't understand it.
It's in the prior to interconnection and, and then, yeah, with the continual compliance is.
So this is exactly what the.
It's just reiterating it.
Oh, the actual language says, um, continual compliance?
And we added the word noise.
Yeah, it was, it was missing noise.
Forty-four.
How about number twen, we could add the condition, compliance with, uh, condition 28.
It's already in there. Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, it's, it's there.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's something in there.
Yeah, that's why I picked up it was noise.
Okay.
Yeah.
Julie, do you have any other, um, comments on, on these conditions?
Nope, not for me.
Well, I mean, but the debt exclusion is 36, so can we pull that out?
All right.
So let's move on. To the, um, special permit.
I'll go on the one that says Amy's edits?
Yeah, I didn't, I only made one copy of this, because, so, so this, so we need to remember when we're doing this, that this is a special permit to floodplain. And the only area of floodplain is that small triangle up at the top, where the inverters are. Um, and so.
And I had asked Mike to look into whether or not.
The beginning is all the same as the, um, as the last one. General findings are the same. And then, uh, so for, um, for specific findings is where I'm kind of looking, pushing lots on you guys. So.
And that's on page nine?
Two, page, starting on page two?
Yeah.
So.
Oh, okay.
On number five, um, it says the inverters and battery storage equipment, which was previously to be located at the northwesterly corner of the property at the eastern border, next to an existing operating solar farm owned and/or operated by the applicant. An over 1,000 feet from any non-affiliated abutter is now located as depicted on their revised plan approximately 58.3 feet from the property line at the nearest non-affiliated abutter and partially in the floodplain district. A portion of the inverters and battery storage equipment area is within the 100-year flood zone and not reflected in the plans submitted to the conservation commission for review. I, I don't, I don't think that that's relevant, but I don't know, probably leaving it. We did discuss it, we did discuss that it wasn't the same when I submitted it, but.
I think especially the last section of it is fairly cogent to the floodplain special permit.
Okay, so then do we want to put in anything about, any findings about how that, how we suggested that it be moved? Meaning, um, rotated or, you know, to try and get those inverters out of?
I would. I would.
I think the thought was to keep, as long as it's in compliance, I mean.
I would submit that the applicant stated that the location of the inverters was not flexible at this time.
Is that the question you were asking, Amy?
Yes, because, yes.
They say it can't move, why would we bother to suggest something else?
Okay.
Well, I think it's relevant that we show some, some discomfort with its location. We did request that they be moved simply because they responded they can.
That's.
But I think it makes sense to reference the fact that the board had issues with, um, inverters and batteries that were now only fifty-eight feet or whatever it is. From the property line. How we worded that.
Um.
So what if we say the, the board requested that the inverters be removed or reconfigured out of the floodplain?
I would just say removed or reconfigured.
Removed or reconfigured.
They can't be removed. Obviously, we need inverters to run this thing. But removed.
Relocated or reconfigured.
Relocated or reconfigured.
The applicant said no?
Or reconfigured, and the applicant stated that the location of the inverters was not.
Flexible?
And, Mr. Chairman, I, I noticed in their, um, their packet, their amended application packet, that they, not only the inverters, but they, they noted that small proportions of the project are located within a zone A, including some underground conduit, utility poles, and a portion of the equipment area, which is probably what we're talking about with the inverters. So they, they acknowledge as well that there's underground conduit and utility poles also in a floodplain.
Okay, so.
So we should include that as well?
That before we requested, or no, yeah, so we, we already say that the inverters and battery storage is within floodplain, no one could additionally.
Yeah, I, I don't, was it conduits?
Yeah, underground conduit, utility poles, and a portion of the equipment area.
And then, um, the rest is essentially deleted because the rest has nothing to do with floodplain.
Okay.
Right, I mean, the.
So, what I think that, um, what I think needs to be added to this decision is, um, some findings as to, and I think Julie provided them to us. So we need, we need to just add in Julie's comments as to why the project should not, why the project didn't meet the requirements of the floodplain special permit.
And that's under the specific findings?
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't have any conditions. We would only have findings in this decision because there's no, it was denied.
Right.
So, um, I think what we do is we take the, we call, we, we just need to take the criteria for, um, special permit and Julie's comments, add those in, and then.
Right.
This one's all set, because we don't have to do any.
And, just point out, there was another vote against as well, so if that matters.
Oh, that's right. Did you have any specific?
Not, not really beyond what Julie had pointed out, but I do want to reference back to the Arizona bylaws and the special permit uses in a floodplain. You know, our language is the planning board may, um, after duly advertised public hearing, grant a special permit for a building structure or use in the floodplain. It doesn't say, it says may. It doesn't say shall, it doesn't say must, it says may. So that tells me that there's a lot of discretion and the default is not to approve a special permit unless we feel strongly enough that we should. And no permit shall be issued to fill or excavate in the floodway or to build a new structure or substantially improve an existing structure in the floodway. But even if these conditions are met. Of course, they talk about not upsetting the, uh, hundred year, hundred year flood elevation, which they had noted in their report that they have backup that, that won't do that. But even in the event that, you know, neither one of those are a concern, it doesn't say we should issue the special permit, that we should approve the special permit. Basically says we may if these conditions are met or if these, um, you know, um, like, uh, limitations are, are adhered to. So, it doesn't mean that every time we have a special permit request that we have to approve it. And, and just to kind of reiterate the purpose of a floodplain district. It's to ensure public safety through reducing the threats to life and personal injury, eliminate new hazards for emergency response officials, prevent the occurrence of public emergencies resulting from water quality contamination and pollution due to flooding, avoid the loss of utility services which, if damaged by flooding, would disrupt or shut down the utility network and impact regions of the community beyond the site of flooding, eliminate costs associated with the response and cleanup of flooding conditions, reduce damage to public and private property resulting from flooding waters. That, those are the, those are the purposes of why we have floodplain districts. So, I would say in addition to Julie's comments, we should include those.
So I have this in, I have, um, your comment about may, not shall, and therefore the board has much discretion. And there's also cases on that that have stayed in sight, too. And then, reiterate the purpose of the floodplain. Then we'll put in Julie's, and is there anything else regarding the inverters in the floodplain?
Just a grammatical correction, number seven. I assume the way that's supposed to read, the equipment area, as shown on the revised plans, strike and, will be connected to the adjacent solar facility by above-ground utility poles.
Yes.
Add the ED to connect.
Yeah, well, there's a couple of spots that need to be.
Yeah.
This.
Got it, okay, we got it.
All right, do we have any, any additions of substance or?
So we'll add this as a specific finding. We'll, we'll work with Amy to get Julie's comments and Kevin's.
Any further discussion on this?
Do we need to make a motion of any kind regarding this?
I believe so.
I think, yes, if you could, if you could please make a motion to accept the findings and conditions discussed on the site plan, um, on the site plan.
Do we do them separately?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you, if you could accept the findings and conditions as the site plan approval decision.
Uh, we'll second.
A motion to second, any further discussion? Okay.
Yes.
Kevin, yes, Joe?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll vote yes.
Okay, and then if you could make a motion to accept the findings discussed on, discussed for the site, for the special permit denial decision.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion on this? Okay, Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Excellent. So I think that's it, that's all we have. Is there anything else on the board? Do you want to keep us here longer? No? Uh, we can welcome Scott back now, then. Hopefully, he can stay for the long haul. So unless there's nothing else, we can, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion to second. Uh, we have to do a roll call, sorry. Kevin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Adjourned.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Thanks, Julie.
Thanks, thanks for accommodating, you guys, I really appreciate it.